All righty, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, June 8th, meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. We will call to order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember Brightigam?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Here.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. All righty, thank you. Can I ask Assistant City Manager Maria Stipe to do the invocation, and then Councilmember O'Neil to lead us in the pledge there?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. If everybody could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask for your presence here this evening as we seek to understand and address the needs of our community. We also humbly ask that you guide us to answer those needs in order that we may do what is best for all of the citizens of Garden Grove. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the face of the flag and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, and one God, equal to all, liberty and justice for all.
All righty, thank you. That takes us on to oral communications. I do have a couple cards.
Those two cards are for item 3C.
Oh, okay. No cards for just general?
No cards for oral communications. We did receive two emails today. I guess we do have a speaker, Mr. Dibbs. That's okay, that's fine.
Please go ahead to the podium.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, citizens of Garden Grove. My name is Nicholas Dibbs, and about this time of year, people are graduating from high school, and a lot of folks have already graduated from college. So I want to congratulate all the graduates and mention the importance of using your talents, experience, and your life skills throughout your working career and your life to help make the world a better place. And each of us, when we leave high school, we have about 80,000 hours of work time, and that's 88 hours a day, five days a week, times 40 years is 80,000. So I encourage all of the graduates to use their skills and talents and their 80,000 hours to help make the world a more peaceful, more just place, both at the community level, at the state, the nation, and the world. And I want to urge, first off, all these graduates that graduated since March of 2020 have had to endure the global pandemic and adjust their life in many challenging and unexpected ways. So congratulations to all the graduates for surviving the pandemic and for graduating from high school, and those of you that graduated from college as well. I do want to mention that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. wrote a very good speech called "Beyond Vietnam," seven pages, so please Google that. And do I have any time left, or is my time up?
A little bit.
I heard a...
Okay.
Two and a half minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. The time is short, but I... It's also today is June the 8th, June the 8th, and as a science teacher, I learned a lot about science, but I think history is very important, and perhaps even more important, so that we don't learn from history so we don't repeat the mistakes of the past. And on June the 8th, 1967, veterans, sailors aboard the USS Liberty were attacked. Their ship was attacked, and over 30 of them were killed. They have a website, www.ussliberty.org. Sometimes the truth is uncomfortable, but we have to have the courage to learn from history and read about it. So go to USSLiberty.org. I want to mention to the mayor and the council, in my packet that I provided as an applicant for the Parks Commission, the city of Long Beach has a nonprofit foundation called Partners of Parks, and they've been doing this for 35 years. And I urge the mayor and the council to, whether I get on the Parks Commission or not, to have this type of a program where we can raise money from the community, expand our parks, improve green space, and provide more green space, which will help reduce crime, and provide mental health wellness for people so they can get out, and that we should have a nature area here in Garden Grove and/or at Willowick. And I want to thank the council and the mayor for thanking me for being one of the co-sponsors on the college graduates reception back in May. I also want to urge the council to allow people to call in. Many of us, many folks can't make it here in person, so allow the option to pre-record a message so that that can be delivered by phone for those who can't make it. Thank you for listening, and take care. God bless to all the graduates, and congratulations.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under oral, or is that it? Okay, thank you. We will close oral communications, and we're going to recess over to successor agency. So I'll go ahead and open successor. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Member Brightigam?
Here.
Member O'Neil?
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Here.
Member Bowie?
Here.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. Okay, we already did oral communications simultaneously with city council, so it takes us on to consent. Just receive and file the minutes. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
I'd like to pull an item. Oh, sorry, this is the wrong one, never mind.
George, second.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Member Brightigam?
Yes.
Member O'Neil?
Yes.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn and reconvene city council. That takes us on to consent items. Recommended that items 2A through 2I be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Do I have any requests to pull?
Now I'd like to pull item 2E, and I'll motion to approve the balance.
I second it.
Okay, roll call vote on the balance, please.
Move the motion.
Member O'Neil.
Motion and second, so go ahead and roll call vote for the balance except for 2E.
Member O'Neil?
Yes.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightigam?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. 2E, as requested, a poll by Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify with staff that for those folks that were overpaying, they would receive a credit, and for those who were underpaying would not be charged retroactively for what they were underpaying.
Yes, Mayor Protem, you're correct. All of the overcharges will be refunded as a statement credit in the future statements, and the underpayment will not be charged retroactively. You're correct.
And the notice that was provided in this item was the one that was mailed out to all of the residents?
It will be tomorrow morning.
Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, I'd like to motion to approve the item.
I'll second it.
Motion second, roll call vote, please.
Member, Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightigam?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. That takes us on to public hearings. We actually do have three listed, so we'll dive right into item 3A.
Item 3A is adoption of a resolution to confirm the annual levy of fiscal year 2021-22 assessment for the downtown assessment district, and Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, we have a final step in establishing the annual assessment for the downtown assessment district for fiscal year 2122. The assessment remains the same from previous years, and the expenditures will also remain the same. In accordance with the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, the remaining action for the city council is to hold a public hearing and to adopt the resolution confirming the assessments for the district. All information will be forwarded to the county assessor for collection of the assessments. This concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I don't have any cards, but anyone wishing to speak on this particular item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
I have to interrupt just for a moment. I just have to announce the fact that as of 5:30 PM today, June 8th, 2021, the city clerk's office received a total of zero protests. Since 5:30 PM, no additional protests were received, and there are 28 parcels in the downtown assessment district. As a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest.
Great. Okay, colleagues?
I'll move approval.
Second it.
Motion second, call to vote, roll call, please.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightigam?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, thank you. Item 3B.
Item 3B is adoption of resolutions confirming the annual levy of fiscal year 2021-22 assessments for the Garden Grove Street Lighting District, the Garden Grove Street Lighting District number 991, and the Garden Grove Park Maintenance District, and Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Mrs. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, city council is being asked to hold public hearings for the city's street light and park maintenance districts, and to adopt resolutions for the collection of assessments for those districts. The public hearings are required by law, and their purpose is to hear testimony on the matter of the annual assessments. Once the hearings are complete, the resolutions may be adopted. Should the resolutions pass, the required information will be forwarded to the county assessor for collection of the assessments. The assessments will raise approximately $1.3 million in street lighting revenue and $700,000 for maintenance of the parks. There are no increases in the assessment rates from last fiscal year. This concludes my report, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Hold on. Yeah, well, it specifically has to do with the assessment of the street lighting district and Garden Grove Park Maintenance District. So if it's specifically within that context, then you may speak. Mayor Jones and members of the council, my name is Nicholas Dibbs. I have a question with regard, and maybe you can ask Mr. Murray, but our Congressional Medal of Honor Trail, the maintenance for that, is that included in any of the park assessment areas? How are we going to get the funding to maintain that newly dedicated park trail known as the Medal of Honor Trail, which is along the railroad right away? So that's my only question. Are, is there any funding in this assessment to help provide maintenance and/or upgrades for that? And I've been told I need to address my question or comments to the council, and then if you have a question, you can address it to Mr. Murray. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, colleagues?
I'll move it.
Second it.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Just before I take the roll call vote, I'd like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 PM, Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, the city clerk's office received a total of zero protests. Since 5:30 PM, no additional protests were received. There are 30,703 parcels in the Garden Grove Street Lighting District. As a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest. And again, for District 991, there are a total of 349 parcels, and as of 5:30 PM, Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, the city clerk's office received a total of zero protests. And since 5:30 PM, no additional protests were received. As a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest. And again, in the city's park maintenance district, as of 5:30 PM, Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, the city clerk's office received a total of zero protests. There are 35,693 parcels in the city's park maintenance district, and as a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest.
All righty, thank you. You have a motion and a second? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightigam?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
And Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, thank you. That takes us on to item 3C.
Item 3C is introduction and first reading of an ordinance to approve planned unit development number PUD 12812A entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Planned Unit Development Number PUD 12812A, An Amendment to Planned Unit Development Number PUD 12812 to Establish Separate Implementation Provisions and Development Standards for Property Located on the East Side of Harbor Boulevard Between Chapman Avenue and Twin Tree Lane at 12202 Harbor Boulevard, Assessor Parcel Number 23149121, and Preet and Mr. Marino are here from the Planning Division to enter the staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, city council. The applicant is requesting planned unit development approval to facilitate the construction of a restaurant on a 0.83 acre vacant property located at 12202 Harbor Boulevard. The subject property is located on the east side of Harbor Boulevard between Chapman Avenue and Twin Tree Lane. The property has a general plan land use designation of international west mixed use and is currently zoned planning at development number PUD-128-12. The property is located in the Grove District adjacent to the Target Shopping Center to the north, the Site C Hotel Development on the properties to the east and south, and the Sheraton Hotel to the west across Harbor Boulevard. The subject property is currently unimproved. The subject site was originally included in planned unit development number PUD-128-12 for the 5.3 acre Site C Hotel project. The developer of that project had the option of acquiring the subject property and adding it to the Site C project, but they were ultimately unable to acquire the property and was thus not incorporated into that development. Later land use approvals reduced the Site C project from the original 5.3 acres to the 4.3 acres that it is currently after the developer failed to acquire the subject property. The revised Site C approvals took up nearly all of the original building area allotted for the project but excluded the subject site. So in essence, the 12202 Harbor Boulevard property was never fully integrated into that Site C project, leaving that property undevelopable. In order to develop the property, the PUD zoning must be amended to allow additional development on the site. Therefore, the applicant is requesting a subarea of PUD 128-12. If the subarea is approved, the 0.83 acre site would have a zoning designation of planned unit development number 128-12, the letter A. The subarea PUD 128-12A would allow for the development of the restaurant on the site. It will also provide development standards that govern the design and function of the development in the PUD subarea. These standards are as or more restrictive as those approved under PUD-128-12. Under the current PUD zoning, the property would remain vacant, but the requested subarea A will result in a project actually being built on that property. The proposed PUD subarea is consistent with the general plan land use designation and with the goals and policies for the resort district. The subarea enhances and complements other entertainment and resort uses in the vicinity. The project improves an otherwise vacant property with a restaurant, which is a desired use on Harbor Boulevard. The project design enhances the Harbor Boulevard streetscape with windows, dining areas, pedestrian improvements, signage, and landscaping all oriented towards harbor. The proposed restaurant is accessible to both vehicle and pedestrian traffic, accommodating locals and tourists alike. The Garden Grove Planning Commission, along with a recommendation for the PUD subarea, also approved Site Plan Number SP-099-2021 to allow for the construction of the proposed restaurants and associated site improvements contingent upon city council's approval of the subarea. The site plan approval included a 3,267 square foot drive-through Raising Canes Restaurant, a two-lane drive-through accommodating up to 18 cars, 30 onsite parking spaces with the remaining required parking spaces provided on the adjacent property to the north, approximately 7,000 square feet of onsite landscaping, and adjacent to Harbor Boulevard landscaping to match the Grove District, and then contemporary architecture and design features that are compatible with and contribute to the Grove District. All proposed improvements comply with the standards and regulations of the general plan municipal code and the proposed PUD-128-12A. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council take the following action. One, conduct a public hearing, and two, introduce and conduct the first reading of an ordinance approving planned unit development number PUD-128-12A to amend the city's official zoning map to change the zoning of the project site to PUD-128-12A zoning. This concludes staff's report, and we are available to answer any questions.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Any questions, staff, before we open the public hearing?
I do, but I can wait till after. Does it matter? Is that to ask?
If it's a clarification question about the staff report, do it now, or?
Yeah, we can wait. Go ahead and, yeah.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I do have two cards, I believe, from the applicant, so Matthew Jocelyn?
I'll go first.
Okay. John Pollock, please go first. Thank you.
All right, Mayor, council, thank you so much for having us before you today. We're very excited to be here. My name is John Pollock. I'm with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. I'm a development consultant for Raising Canes. Unfortunately, Raising Canes could not be here. Normally, they would be for these types of meetings. However, they're still facing some travel restrictions internally with the company, so hopefully for the next one, they'll be able to be here and be in front of you all. I'm here to answer any questions specific to the Raising Canes development, anything related to the site or any of the reports or anything before you. So if there's anything specific you want to ask about the project itself, I'm here to answer questions, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Jocelyn from Sunbelt.
Members of the council, good evening. My name is Matthew Jocelyn, and I work for Sunbelt Investment Holdings, who is the DBA entity from Mon Enterprises, Inc., the landlord over this particular parcel and the neighboring adjacent Target Parcel. I'm an asset manager with the firm and handle all the company's leasing and development for their selling California portfolio. Tonight, I just want to voice my support for this project on behalf of our ownership and our team. We've been very proud owners in the city of Garden Grove for this particular parcel of land since 1978 with the goal of creating value that serves the local community. We're very excited about this project as we believe Raising Canes will be a wonderful addition to the community. They are a tenant at another center that we own at Anaheim Hills, and we've been blown away at their operation. They do a first-class job at maintaining all of their locations very aesthetically. They continuously improve their operations and deliver a world-class product at a very attractive price point. So, you know, to keep it short, I also agree with John. I'm here to answer any questions that you have as well. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you so much. Stephanie and colleagues, do we have any questions specifically for the applicant, or should we go ahead and close the public hearing?
This question, maybe they would want to respond to this.
Okay.
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
This potential restaurant sits in District 5, which is my district, and I've had some questions come up from just a few residents asking about the drive-through and just curious about how that would work, and would there be any spill-over traffic into harbor and cause any congestion issues? So that was the only, really the only question for clarification that I had.
Yeah, so as a part of their application, the applicant did do various traffic studies, looking at exactly that, the length of the drive-through queue, looking at the spill-over effect if there is any. The results of that study, so they looked at other Raising Canes in the vicinity. I think they looked at Brea, I think, was one of them, and I forget which ones, but they looked at a handful of Raising Canes restaurants in the area, and they found that the average queue length at the most, at the peak hour was 17 cars. This Raising Canes that they proposed here that was approved by planning commission, it does have a queuing area for 18 cars, so that's one over the highest observed for other restaurants. And that 18 is fully within the drive-through queue itself. It doesn't even account for any lining up in the drive-through or on the parking lot area of the restaurant.
That's great. Thank you very much. Appreciate the clarification on that.
Let me add one tidbit, and maybe you can comment on it, too, but I read somewhere in there that they also have a larger kitchen on this one and think they'll be able to process those cars through more efficiently.
Yes, I believe that's true. They were looking at a different kind of, a newer operating model for inside the kitchen as far as ordering and getting the food out. This was supposed to be the state-of-the-art kitchen with all the latest tech that they have.
Okay. Colleagues, any other questions, comments?
I'll just say, I'm excited to see this go forward. When you get an operation that's as successful as Raising Canes is, I mean, all those details need to be thought through, and there is that propensity for causing backups, traffic issues, so I'm glad that we, you know, scrutinize all that kind of stuff. But I think this is going to be enormously successful in this location, and I'm just excited to see this long-term property owner in our city actively reinvesting in all parts of their center and everything they're doing from, you know, the Target store renovations that were done to other things throughout the center and, you know, what they aspire to do in the future. So I think it's a great relationship, and we're excited and we're honored to have you guys in town, so we appreciate it.
If we're doing comments, can I comment then?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I just think, I do think it's a welcome addition to the harbor corridor, and I think as we continue to open back up, and I think the summer is going to be very successful, both here in Garden Grove and in Anaheim. A lot of families spend busy days at Disneyland, and they come back to their hotel, and they want to hang out by the pool, and they're going to be able to come across the street and get Raising Canes and take it back to their hotel or eat there and go back. And I think it's just going to be a lot of fun and great for families as well as our local residents. It's a very popular chain, and again, I think it's going to be a really welcome addition to the corridor, so thank you very much.
Great. With that, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightigam?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, thank you. That concludes public hearings. Takes us on to commission committee matters. We do have agendaized consideration of an appointment to fill the vacancy on the Parks Recreation and Arts Commission. I would like to throw out for discussion and nomination Kevin Rea for appointment to the commission.
I'll second.
Make the motion?
Yeah.
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightigam?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty. Items for consideration, number 5A.
Okay, number 5A is an introduction and first reading. Okay, number 5A is an introduction and first reading of fiscal year 2021-22 Paramedic Tax Override Rate Ordinance entitled an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove establishing the amount of money for paramedic services that must be raised by an avalarum tax override and the setting of the tax rate of said override. And Ms. Song is here to give the report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. The item before you is an ordinance authorizing a tax override of eight cents per $100 of the assessed evaluation of taxable properties within the city limits. This avalarum override tax was originally approved by the Garden Grove residents in 1974. It is designated to help fund the ongoing cost of paramedic services provided to the community. The 1974 ballot measure set a limit to this tax at 10 cents per $100 of assessed evaluation. The proposed rate for fiscal year 2021-22 is eight cents below the max amount. This rate has not been changed since 2017. The avalarum override tax levy is necessary to maintain the paramedic services, which currently is provided through the Orange County Fire Authority. We estimate the paramedic tax revenue for fiscal year 21-22 will be around 13.5 million. In order to levy this tax, state codes require the City Council to set the annual levy by ordinance or resolution. We therefore recommend that the City Council introduce and conduct the first reading of the ordinance titled "Establishing the Amount of Money for Paramedic Services That Must Be Raised by an Avalarum Tax Override and Setting of the Tax Rate of Said Override." This concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions? Or if not, then a motion?
Move the motion.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigam.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cloughenstein.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Great. Takes us on to matters, and we do have one item listed under matters, so 6A.
Item 6A is City Council review and approval of a six-month extension for the Accessible Business Program and confirm the necessity of continuing the local emergency. And Ms. Kim is here to give the report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you this evening is to request a continuation of the Accessible Business Program. By way of background, the Accessible Business Program was developed in May 2020 during the COVID pandemic and state restrictions on indoor dining. The program provided local businesses the ability to temporarily convert portions of their parking areas, walkways, patios, sidewalks, and public rights of way into outdoor dining and retail areas. Businesses on the historic Main Street were also afforded the option to create temporary parklets using the on-street parking spaces in front of their tenant space. To participate in the program, businesses were required to obtain a temporary outdoor business no-fee permit. To date, approximately 124 permits have been processed under this program. In anticipation of the changes with the state blueprint for a safer economy on June 15th, staff is recommending a six-month extension of the Accessible Business Program. While we expect distancing and capacity restrictions will be lifted for most business and activities after June 15th, transition and operational changes of restaurants are still adjusting as the economy begins the process of recovery and getting back to normal. Staff will utilize the next six months to explore possible alternatives for permanent outdoor business operations and bring back those recommendations to council for consideration. This concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Of course. Go ahead, Phil.
Just want you to clarify with, if this is approved tonight, they do not need to reapply or renew, right? It's automatically applied to those that already have the permit.
That is correct.
Move the motion, Mayor.
Second.
Great. All right, we have motion, a second. Please roll call vote.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cloughenstein.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Brightigam.
Yes.
And Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty. Thank you. We'll go on to matters from councilmembers. Start down the end there. District 1, George Brightigam.
Nothing for me.
District 2, John O'Neill. Deidre Tuha Nguyen.
I just have a little, I just want to congratulate all the graduates, high school, and also all the promotions, because my second kid is going to be promoted tomorrow to the intermediate school. So congratulations to all of them, and also happy birthday to Councilmember Cloughenstein.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowie, District 4.
Yes, just came back from Hawaii, so just want to catch up on one issue that I did not have a chance to chime in previously, and that is the permitting issue. I understand the staff having, working very hard and trying to come up with a measure in order to shorten the time to call for inspection, and I thank you for that, but I think the concern is still out there. It's still taking a long time. We just received another email this morning from some resident expressing various first question with the time it took to schedule an inspection for their project. I also have many others who called me last Thursday or Friday asking to expedite because they are having a wedding for their family that coming up in September, and they are worrying that, you know, if it takes three to four weeks every time to go for some inspection, they will not be able to, be able to, you know, hold the wedding in their homes. So I do ask that why we are hiring more inspections, inspectors, and other firms to, you know, balance out the load. I hope that we have certain criterias so that we can expedite people who are in distress need in order to help them out. And I would like to have, you know, to ask the city manager to look into it, and why we are waiting for a little bit longer solution, we need to be able to have some way to expedite and help people out.
Thank you. Councilmember Cloughenstein.
All right. Well, I just felt like I needed to go on the record to say, and I got my first mosquito bite of the 2021 mosquito season, so I'd be remiss if I didn't tell everyone that it is time to start dumping and draining your standing water again. Not that you should ever really stop, but checking your screens, wearing bug repellent when outside. We're going to have a summer full of concerts and movies in the park, and things are opening back up again, and we're going to be spending time outdoors together again, so make sure you take precautions. We have launched the campaign through vector control, so you'll start to see signage pop up on public works trucks and on billboards and so forth. So just a reminder to be careful this summer and try to stay safe from getting bit. The other thing I just wanted to make mention of also is, this time of year is so beautiful in our city. We have so many lovely homes that plant gardens and lots of trees, and it makes me honestly miss the Garden Grove Pride Home Beautification Awards. And I know I had talked to staff about this a few years ago, and it just wasn't the right time to talk about bringing it back, but it was something that I know in my family personally, I had aunts and uncles and my grandparents and others in my family win those awards, and I know how much it meant to them. My grandpa had it up on his mantle for the longest time. He was so proud of that. And I was a judge in 2016 and loved that process and really enjoyed being a part of it. I know it takes up an incredible amount of staff time, and they go to such great lengths to make it such a special program, but I know I've had a lot of community members just tell me how much they miss it and how many residents miss it. So I would love to just start thinking about and looking at ways that we can maybe bring that back. I think there's ways to streamline it. I think there's ways to ask the community to help and volunteer, maybe bringing in our NIC Commission or our Parks and Recs Commission, and really getting people invested and excited about it in the community level and from the stakeholder level. And we can probably streamline it and make it more tech-friendly this time around. I don't know, but just something to think about and something I'd love to bring back. I think it was something very special and really brings the community together, so maybe at some point we can, we can look at doing so, and I would love to spearhead and help with that in any way that I can. Thanks.
Thank you. MPT Kim Nguyen.
You want to make a motion to bring it back to council for a report, Councilmember Cloughenstein, because I'd second it.
I'd like to bring back a report to council. I'd make a motion.
I will second it.
Thank you.
I want to congratulate all the graduates, wish Councilmember Cloughenstein a happy birthday, early happy birthday.
Wait, really quick, does that need a, does that need an actual action?
Oh, sorry. I forgot, we have to vote.
I think we should.
I totally forgot to wait for a vote.
So we have a, we have a motion, a second, to bring that back to council for a report. Why don't we do a roll call vote, just to be official about it?
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cloughenstein.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Brightigam.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. And Councilmember Cloughenstein made quick mention, we are having our summer concert and movie series back, so pay attention to newsletters and face, social media posts that you may see to pick the day that you want to go, whatever movie you want to watch. I think there's like Jumanji and Jurassic Park, you know, and I'm waiting for the Selena tribute band. Hope to see some folks there for that one. It's the day before my birthday, so I expect everyone to be there, celebrating me, of course. And with that, that's all the comments I have. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I do have one that I'd like to bring up, and if I could ask you guys to indulge me in perhaps sending direction for staff and legal counsel to just review this, bring it back, and then we can all look at it together and see if it makes sense, but, because I'm not 100% sure about it first, but I think it might be cool, and it might be something we'd all want to get behind. In the Civic Center area, on Civic Center Drive, in between Acacia and Garden Grove Boulevard, there is a kind of an unofficial little mini memorial park that has a POW flag and other flags in it. I think we generally consider it a park, but upon kind of an initial look, it looks like it was installed there in 1972. It doesn't have an official name. We tend to refer to it as Memorial Park, but it doesn't have, to my knowledge, it doesn't have any official plaque or anything that says that. It's a little park area. If we did officially consider it a park, then maybe that draws better attention to maintaining it and also having the ability to close it down at 10:00 PM, like all of our other parks, just to kind of handle some of those issues that go along with it as well. I thought it might be timely and relevant if we considered naming, making that an official park and naming it after Lieutenant John Reynolds upon his recent passing and funeral that we observed this week and some things in that regard. So if everyone is okay with that, perhaps we could bring this back for, as an item at the next meeting and just ask staff to do some preliminary research and see is there any reason why that wouldn't make sense or any problems that would create in any way, but...
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Just a quick question, I guess, perhaps. If this was designated a park, would this be an area in which we could close off in order to host our newly semi-annual, not semi-annual, it's an annual, but we didn't have it last year because of COVID for our Veterans Day event? Would that be an area where we could close off and then designate that for future use? Then I'm 100% supportive.
That would be a natural for that. Okay, thank you. So motion, a second, roll call vote, and that's just to bring it back, and we can dive in, we can take a deeper dive next time it comes back.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Just a one point of clarification. I don't know if you said at the next meeting, or could it be the meeting after that? I'm only suggesting that in two weeks will be all of our budget work.
Oh, sure.
That we'll be presenting. We've got a couple other presentations, so that first meeting in July, it might give you a little more time to discuss it, unless you, if you really, if you want it in two weeks, we'll certainly have it ready for you.
No, no pressure from my end whatsoever. I don't think it's anything timing critical. I just thought it was relevant to the timing of maybe being able to pay attention to the maintenance and upkeep and just how we observe that park as a park, and, you know, since we observed Lieutenant Reynolds' funeral this week, it was on my mind. So yeah, bring it back whenever you see fit. First meeting in July, sound good? Thank you. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cloughenstein.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Brightigam.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
And Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. That's all I have. City managers report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a couple of points. I did want to mention Councilmember Cloughenstein and I did have a good conversation earlier this week about the Garden Grove Beautification Awards concept, and we talked about potentially using the NIC Commission, using volunteers. I know in the past, some of the, some of the background I got is that staff did put a tremendous amount of time, you know, site visits and everything else, and I think that was a part of it, but we could certainly, you know, look at a program that involved more community volunteers, working with each council member in each of your districts, and, you know, having you help us promote the program and sell it, and it might be a fun thing for all of the council members in each of your districts. So we'll go back, I'll spend some time talking to John Montanes and his group and maybe community relations, and we'll kind of try to put some thought to it. We'll bring back some, a report with some ideas that we could maybe take that on to the next level and, and, and report back to you on that.
I appreciate that, and it's not, it's not a rush. I understand that there's a lot going on, especially next meeting, so it can be...
Although springtime is the nicest time.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. So maybe for following spring. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I did also want to just follow up, just briefly, Councilmember Bowie, at the next council meeting, we are going to be bringing back a report on the permitting system and some things that we have on the horizon on, on that. So some of the timeframes are coming down a little bit. They are still longer than what we would all like, but we have some new permitting programming that we're going to be talking about that I think will be helpful, and as a community, we've been, it's a good problem to have, but we've been getting slammed with, with business development and permit applications. So on one hand, it's a good thing. We're leading Orange County in ADU applications and everything else, so not to make an excuse, but we are, we have a lot of activity going on in the community. We are adding some additional part-time inspectors to help us with the work, so we're focused on bringing those numbers down. I've talked to Councilman Brightigam about it. Councilman Bowie, I know all the council members, you're getting questions about that, so we are focused on that. We'll follow up Councilmember Bowie with your wedding inspection issue that you mentioned to us as well, so we'll do that. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is, we had a great first kickoff meeting today with our Garden Grove Police Department and the Be Well OC folks for kicking off our mobile mental health program that all of you approved the last, at our last meeting, I think. And so we're all excited about that. We talked about everything from protocol, policies and procedures, reports that you'll get, hiring, and everything that goes on between. So I would anticipate we'd be coming back to you maybe with a, in July, maybe the second meeting in July with a little report on how that's coming along and, and what you should expect to see. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. General Counsel, anything to report or any need for a closed session?
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council, we did have a closed session on existing litigation earlier this evening, but there is no reportable action out of that meeting.
All righty, thank you. And with that, we will stand adjourned. Very short meeting. Thank you, everyone.